Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham. Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Alderman Fisk. Thank you. Nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, June 27, 2011, meeting of the Evanston City Council. Next is Mayor's Proclamations and Public Announcements. It is Parks and Recreation Month, July 2011. And Laura Biggs is here, and we're going to have a short ComEd update. Go for it, Laura.
Madam Mayor, Alderman, City Clerk. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the Acting Utilities Director this week. So as you are aware, last Tuesday night, a severe thunderstorm came through the Chicago area, which did severe damage not just to Evanston, but to many western northerns suburbs around Chicago, including the city of Chicago. Tornadoes actually touched down in Downers Grove and Mount Prospect, although thankfully, we were spared that. We did have gusts of wind estimated at 75 to 80 miles per hour. So after the storm, ComEd had a power outage of approximately 450,000 customers around the Chicago area. A customer is a single account, so it might be a single-family home, but it might be a huge condo building or a business, so the actual impact's much higher than it sounds. And in Evanston, we had 4,167 accounts without power, which is approximately 12 and 1/2 percent of our accounts. So in the first 12 hours, ComEd restored 1,900 accounts. But after that, the rate of the restoration slowed down. They did focus on life safety issues or areas with large accounts. So for example, within about 24 hours, they restored the area around our North Standpipe as a life safety issue. On Thursday, they restored a large area around Northwestern University. And by Friday morning, they had restored a big cluster in southeastern Evanston. However, they did start facing a lot of criticism for the poor communication. And that was a big issue throughout this. They've sent a staff member after they got this big pushback from municipalities to actually come over here Friday afternoon and work on prioritizing the remaining areas that needed to be restored. So there were, at that time, about four clusters of maybe 100 accounts each around Evanston. And they worked with us to try to make those a priority, and they restored those all by Friday night. And that left on Saturday sort of some remaining isolated, single-family home or single customer accounts, or places where the repair was just going to take a substantial amount of time. So by Sunday, everybody had their power restored. That was a good moment. And everything's relatively back to normal, although I think they're continuing repairs on their system throughout this week, as they try to strengthen it up and move everybody from temporary to permanent, back to the regular switches. So Evanston, out of all of this, was really not the hardest-hit municipality. Our neighbors to the west were much harder hit. And the power was restored at a rate that was very similar to other northshore communities. However, the problem that we had with ComEd was that they were really difficult to reach throughout the crisis. And they gave people estimated restoration times that were extremely ambitious, especially at the beginning. So you might get from them, "My power will be restored in two hours." And then three hours go by, and it's going to be two hours beyond that. And so people really didn't have a chance to prepare for the extended power outages that they ended up facing. Some of those people were without power for three days. And that caused a lot of frustration with the residents. By Friday, they, having gotten a lot of criticism and feedback, they did start to get more organized. And at that point, the estimated restoration times improved, and they really worked with prioritizing appropriately. But I think that they have learned that they need to do some better communication in the future. That was really the biggest problem with this event.
Thank you, Laura. I have been asked by several people, and I think it's a good idea to meet with ComEd. I wanted to know if you all wanted me to ask ComEd to come here so we could all meet with ComEd, or if you want me to do it solo. Does everyone -- I see heads nodding. Do you all want to ask ComEd to come to a meeting? Because I think we have problems that go beyond the storm, which was a vicious storm. But there are areas that, at least there are people who call me and tell me their areas are consistently without power when there is no storm. So I'd like to discuss, as you said, Laura, communication during the storm, which was a problem. And I'd also like to discuss loss of power when there's no storm, and repeated loss of power in certain areas, and to find out what they're doing to address that. Alderman Wilson.
I don't know if it comes into play, but there is a claim form and claim process through comments. I just thought I'd mention that. So if people have or think they have claims, make sure that they take a look at the website and submit those.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Laura. Next. Alderman Grover.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank Laura again for all that she did this weekend to forward all the information to us, to keep us well informed. I really appreciate it, as did the residents in my neighborhoods who were without power for so long. So thank you for all your work on this.
Yes, thank you. You did a terrific job. Acting City Manager. Do you have announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, I have two announcements. The first would be regarding the Fourth of July holiday. Fourth of July activities will take place on Monday, July 4. For parade viewing, as is the case in the past, chairs and blankets may be placed on Central Street parkways from the west side of Bent Park to Asbury Avenue, beginning no earlier than 6:00 a.m. on Friday, July 1. Roping off areas is prohibited. Chairs and blankets are not allowed on sidewalks or on areas where pavement extends to the curb. They may not obstruct or encroach on crosswalks or handicap access to a sidewalk. Belongings must be removed by 6:00 p.m. Monday evenings, that's Monday, July 4. The parade begins at 2:00 p.m. and is sponsored by the Evanston Fourth of July Association. The free concert by the Palatine Concert Band takes place from 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. at Dawes Park, Sheridan Road, at Church Street, followed by fireworks at the lakefront at 9:15 p.m. For more information, go to the city's website, www.cityovevanston.org.
Thank you.
And then the second announcement, because of the holiday schedule, recycling and trash pickup will be on the holiday schedule timeframe. If your pickup was on Monday, it will now be on Tuesday, and so forth through Friday for the following, for next week.
Thank you. Does that conclude your floor?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
I have no communications this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next is Citizen Comment. I'm going to call your name, and if you'd please come up and give your name and address when you speak. First is Junad Rizki, next Kevin O'Connor, Padma Rao, and BK Rao.
Do we have the honors to take this off? No, I'll take it off. Actually, the green bag is from Alderman Fisk's establishment, so I mentioned that. Anyway, tonight, in the spirit of the endless, what I call meaningless, award ceremonies we have here, we citizens have had to endure. I created a new award. I call it the Golden Poncy Award. What it is, in recognizing the city's rather troubling debt position, the city of Evanston is number one in Cook County for debt, as shown on the treasurer's site. That is, we are $332 million in debt to an income of basically $84 million. Staff has tried to paint a better picture of this, but even in the recent Tribune editorial, the Tribune highlighted us as really the poster child of debt in town. The city's recent budget presentations have concerned me. We're not, we're going to continue to move into more into the red. We tend to have selective budgeting, I'm afraid. We aren't going to be dealing with some of the real major departments here, such as the police and the fire and the water departments. It was stated that they really are fine, and there's no issues. Nor has the city really dealt with the capital here again. But I think we'll have a lot of time in the future to discuss this, so tonight, I just want to present the award, of course. And I'm not certain anyone from the city will want to take it, but if anyone does want to come up to the podium and take it, we can do the usual PR pictures. If not, I'll give it to the City Clerk.
All right, Rodney, go get it.
It's all yours. Thank you, Mr. Rizki.
Kevin O'Connor, 1227 Isabella. In the spirit of our Fourth of July weekend, I have a quote to read. "Public sentiment is everything. With public sentiment, nothing can fail. Without it, nothing can succeed. Consequently, he who molds public sentiment goes deeper than he who enacts statutes or pronounces decisions. He makes statutes and decisions possible or impossible to execute." Abraham Lincoln, arguably our greatest president, so far, hopefully. I read that because of its sentiment towards public sentiment. And I'm still very troubled about what happened two council meetings ago about issues that I raised. And then subsequently, at a ward meeting, our city manager said there was a meeting with Northwestern. And yet, I'd like to thank Alderman Wilson for responding to me. I have not heard from Mayor Tisdall. I would hope to soon. I think I've had a lot of patience on that. I would ask this council, as to, from a tax-paying resident's point of view, what do you do when $175,000 of our tax money goes to our city manager? And then that city manager, at a meeting where he knows he's already attended a meeting, he said, "I'd like to see your proof." And I don't know what recourse there is to that, but it certainly doesn't seem a very democratic thing, and I don't know how this is going to be handled. But I find that extremely troubling. I find it extremely dangerous and un-American. And I expect much, much better of all of our elected officials and all of our city staff, that even though the city manager works for the council, it would, it would seem to me that the council needs to figure out how that needs, how that is going to be addressed. And I, for one, would like to know about, and I think most of the public should know, how you plan on handling that issue. Thank you. Have a nice Fourth.
Thank you.
My name is Padma Rao. I live at 2246 Sherman Avenue, and I'm speaking regarding the Kendall re-subdivision. My neighbors and I stated concerns regarding the plan to needlessly kill over two dozen mature trees and to endanger the lives of young children and other pedestrians on coal faks. As this council is fully aware, our concerns are supported by authorities in law, science, ecology, zoning, tax considerations, and logic. But this council never cited any basis for ignoring our concerns. This council clearly stated that closed-door negotiations were occurring between the city and developer during the pendency of this case before this council, and that the neighbors were excluded from that dialogue. This council voted in favor of the plan without any public discussion at all. By doing so, this council created the perceptions that the council excluded the public from discussions directly affecting the public, and that the council voted without any consideration of any of the neighbors' concerns, no matter how valid. How does this council's vote achieve its stated goals of openness and transparency? The developer's lawyer threatened to sue the city using the law firm Holland and Knight. But Holland and Knight received tens of thousands of dollars for its legal representation of the city. So based on conflict of interest principles, Holland and Knight cannot represent against its own current and former client. According to the minutes for the council meeting on May 10, 2010, an immediate family member of an alderman works for the same firm. Is that the reason for this council's refusal to address this serious legal, ethical issue? If not, what is? Recently, the U.S. Supreme Court issued its opinion in Nevada Commission on Ethics versus Kerrigan. In that case, Kerrigan, a member of a local city council, voted in favor of a project in which his friend and campaign manager was a paid consultant and would therefore benefit from the vote. The high court held that Kerrigan violated Nevada's ethics and government law by voting and advocating the passage of a matter in which his commitment to a blood relative or business associate would reasonably be expected to affect his judgment. In view of this Supreme Court decision and the relationship between this council and Holland and Knight, this council's vote without discussion creates the impression that this council acted unethically, if not outright illegally. Why should Nevada have higher ethical standards than Evanston? This council's refusal to cite any specific legal authorities or data relied upon in voting to needlessly endanger the lives of innocent pedestrians and kill defenseless trees is tantamount to admitting that this council's vote is groundless. This council must therefore reverse its decision before any child or tree is killed. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, it is good to see you again. The feeling may not be mutual, but that is all right by me. I am not running for any office, nor am I after any award. What I am talking about today again is Kendall property issue. It involves the killing of more than 24 trees in my neighborhood. It should bother everyone. The reason for that is simple. A few decades ago, I learned in my botany class that trees play a major role in balancing our ecological system. The massive tree-killing results in disrupting this system, which in turn adversely affects the quality of air we breathe. High school botany is simple, but very basic. That's why I can never forget what I learned then. I hope the powers that be that passed the Kendall property re-subdivision remember what they learned in their high schools. Whatever reasons to pass this thoughtless re-subdivision were involved are irrelevant. It gives the impression that the issue went into action without consideration for the constituents. Furthermore, the badly engineered alley at Kendall property is a definite threat to the safety of children in the neighborhood. I argue to rethink, recollect what you learned in high school, redo the re-subdivision before it gets irreversible, reverse the tree-killing resolution, then we will all win. I shall return to talk more about Kendall. Thank you.
Thank you. Headmaster Becker, I didn't have you listed, but did you wish to speak?
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Headmaster Becker is here representing Royce Moore, just to answer questions and maybe give a brief overview of the project that is not already listed in our packet. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I simply want to say that the relationship between Royce Moore and Evanston has been a wonderful period of time. We couldn't quite rival some of your earlier presenters, who were at the 100-year mark, but 96 years we have been a proud member of Evanston, and we look forward to continuing that. The work at 1200 Davis Street is moving along. We're very excited about the opportunities we're going to continue to present to students. Our early childhood program is expanding. Our commitment to economic diversity remains without change. And we very much appreciate the help that the city can provide, without, in this case, incurring any additional liability on your part, for us to be able to move forward in a timely fashion so that we can make the full-fledged move from 640 Lincoln Street to 1200 Davis this fall. We're anticipating that will happen in November, and we'll be inviting all of you to the grand groundbreaking when it is ready to occur.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Yes, ma'am. First of all, we have approval of the minutes of the township public budget hearing, June 13. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 13. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of June 20. Administration Public Works requests your approval of the city payroll through June 19 in the amount of $2,609,353.04. The city of Evanston bills through June 28, 2011, in the amount of $3,736,962.89. The committee and staff recommend the continuation of the annual sole-source software license and service agreement with Sun Guard Public Sector for the police department's software. The city council, we request the city council authorize the city manager to renew this annual service agreement in the amount of $58,515. This is a 0% increase over last year. Funding is from the emergency telephone system. We ask your approval to authorize the city manager to continue a maintenance agreement for Sherman Plaza, established in 2006. The agreement is between the city and the residents of Sherman Plaza Condo Association and the retail owner, currently MB Evanston Sherman LLC, and covers the period of August 23 through August 22, 2012. Funding is from the parking fund, and not to exceed maximum of $115,000. We, next item, I believe, the Ozenga contract, is that off the consent agenda? We were supposed to get some information. Did?
We do have the information, but since I'm providing it, I'm assuming it is off.
Okay, let's take it off.
Since I'm providing the option.
And the next one also, Mr. City Manager? Okay. So A33 and A34 are off the consent agenda, and we're simply waiting for some additional information. Next, A35. The city, we request the city council authorize the manager to execute the option to renew the contract to print the city's Combined Recreation and Arts Activities Guide and Highlights Newsletter publication with Ripon printers for a third year in the amount of $54,900. This is the lowest price responsible and responsive bid. Next, we ask your approval of option two, the base bid plus alternates 1 through 6 for the 2011 Comprehensive Parking Garage Repair Project to Bully &amp; Andrews LLC in the total amount of $2,539,934. The Capital Improvement Program, the Washington National TIF, and the Parking Fund are the funding sources for this expenditure. Next, we ask your approval for risk-based fees at the farmer's market, all sites, to address current economic concerns. The three recommended fees are Risk 1, $225 for high risk, that is, food sold requires extensive handling. Risk 2 level is $150, which represents medium risk, food sold requires minimal handling. And Risk 3 is $75, low risk, food sold is prepackaged. We ask your approval also, let's see, oh, this, let's take this off so that the committee chair can explain this. This is the vehicle sticker selection and various other matters having to do with vehicle stickers. Next is A6. We ask your approval of Resolution 40R11, which authorizes the manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the purchase of real property. Alderman Wilson, do you want this off the consent?
I did, thank you.
Pardon me?
I do want it off the consent, thank you.
The purchase of property is off the consent agenda. Next item is A7. The committee recommends approval of Ordinance 58011, which amends the city code 162 regarding the mayor's powers and duties. This has to do with civil unions and solemnizing marriages, and the mayor will, or one of us will move to suspend the rules after it's been introduced.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is Ordinance 59011. We recommend your approval of this ordinance for the issuance of a not-to-exceed amount of $19,300, we're going to leave this on for introduction, $19,300,000 in 20-year tax-exempt general obligation bonds. The issuance is comprised of GO bonds to be issued for the 2011 Capital Improvements Program, $9,120,000, the sewer fund, $8 million, and refinancing of a portion of Series 2003B bonds, $2,120,000. This is for introduction. Next, we ask your approval to introduce Ordinance 60011, which authorizes revenue bonds and related matters regarding Royce Moore School conduit financing. The city will not incur a liability to repay this debt in the event of a default by Royce Moore, and will not, and it will not appear on the city's financial balance sheet. It will show as a note on the financial statements. Next, Ordinance 42011. The Liquor Commission recommends adoption of this ordinance, which amends Section 356 (H) of the city code to decrease the number of Class H licenses from 2 to 1 due to a change in ownership of Evanston First Liquors at 1019 Davis. Concurrently, we ask your approval to adopt Ordinance 43011, which amends Section 356H of the city code to increase the number of Class H liquor licenses from 1 to 2 to permit the issuance to Vishna Evanston Liquor, Inc., new owner of Evanston First Liquors. Next, for action, is Ordinance 44011, which decreases the number of Class D liquor licenses from 24 to 23 due to a change in ownership of Royan Sushi Bar. This ordinance was introduced June 13 at the city council meeting. Likewise, we move, we request your approval to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses to permit the issuance to Red Mackey, Inc., the new owner of Royan Sushi Bar. This ordinance was also introduced at the June 13 city council meeting. Next, under Planning and Development, let's see, we have Ordinance 48011, and our staff recommends that we move introduction of Ordinance 48011, the provisional ordinance related to amendments, to Title IV and V of the Evanston City Code. Next is Ordinance 55011, having to, let's see, requires, which requires notices to neighbors within 250 feet of certain applications for certificates of appropriateness. This ordinance was introduced at the June 13 city council meeting, and this is for action. The proposed ordinance, township ordinance, is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the city chair. Next, we have a few appointments. For appointments to the Arts Council, we, Arts Council, we have Ann Berkeley and Catherine Trusdale. The Board of Ethics, Latrice Mason. Citizens Police Advisory Committee, Edward Trivedore. Human Relations Commission, Dori Mendoza. Library Board, Benjamin Shapiro. Mental Health Board, Karen Ruthzel. Playground and Rec Board, Daniel Stein. Sign Review and Appeal Board, David Drain. Zoning Board of Appeals, Clara Weinberg. To the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness, the following appointments are requested. Debbie Bretag, Paula Flores, Bill Colen, Janice Lindquist, Joan, Joe List, Reverend Velda Love, and Janet Winslow. And these, this is, just to clarify, Madam Mayor, these are all appointments that are introduced and passed tonight. There's no second reading.
That is correct.
That's correct. All right. With that, Madam Mayor, I, this completes the consent agenda, and I move approval.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda, and seeing no lights and no discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda is passed. Alderman Holmes, Administration and Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A3.3, I would move approval of a contract awarded to Ozina Ready-Mix Concrete Incorporated for concrete bid 12-33. Staff recommend city council approval of a contract for the purpose of, purchase of 400 cubic yards of concrete at a cost of $101 per cubic yard. 250 cubic yards of high early strength concrete at $121 per cubic yard, and 50 cubic yards of floor, floorable fill at $89 per cubic yard to Ozina Ready-Mix Concrete for a total of $75,100. Funding for this will, funding for this purchase will come from FY 2011 General Fund Street and Alley Account, 2670.65055, in the amount of $30,000. The Water Fund Account, 7115.65051, in the amount of $8,000. And the Sewer Fund Account, 7400.65051, in the amount of $8,000. The remaining $29,100 will be paid from the Funding Year 2012 General Fund Street and Alley Account, 2670.65055.
Is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded.
Madam Mayor, this A3 and A4 both had different amounts for the purchase price on the recommendation versus what was on the WMEBE amount, and I think Mr. Lyons has an explanation for that.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, we did review the process for both of these agenda items, and in that process, the Public Works team reduced the amount of units in both of the bids after Mr. Shepherd had done his review for MWEBE purposes. So, in both cases, his dollars are higher than the approval request, and I wanted, but it was a process issue not related to their qualifications of MWEBE. We have also, there was some discussion at the committee level of whether Ozinga is an Evanston-based business. They have been considered an Evanston-based business in multiple awards previous to this point. I can think of other examples, such as an OfficeMax or other areas where the local outlet is here, but corporate may not be located here. So, we have looked at those as Evanston-based businesses, at least with respect to trying to keep our purchasing dollars local.
Thank you. Does that answer everybody's questions? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the contract award to Ozinga Ready-Mix Concrete Incorporated for concrete. City Clerk, would you read the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the contract is approved.
Madam Mayor, A34, the approval of a contract award to Arrow Construction for modified hot mixed asphalt at the, for a total amount of $30,000, and it was the same concern, so I would just move approval of that.
It's been moved and seconded, and seeing no lights on. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I just wondered about there being absolutely no minority women or Evanston business providing asphalt. I mean, haven't we had qualifications along those lines in the past? There's, because there's 100% waiver here.
Mr. Lyons, do you have an answer?
I do not have an answer off the top of my head for the, for this. I can follow up with the council, and if there is any question, we have talked with the operating department. If for any reason the council would like to hold this until 7/11, we can, or we can provide that follow-up in a Friday packet to the council on the asphalt vendors.
Madam Mayor, if I could just offer this, if, what I would like is, I would like us to pass this, and then I would like tomorrow for us to look in to see if there is a minority women or Evanston business providing this service, and if there is, then bring it back to us. If there isn't, then there's no reason to hold this. But it just seems to me that over the years, we've had...
Alderman Rainey, my memory is not my greatest asset tonight, so... Alderman Holmes?
If I remember correctly, Alderman Rainey, I think this one is the one that we brought, it was, I know was someone closer to here. We didn't always purchase from this vendor, but it was cheaper, if I'm not mistaken, I think that was the explanation given for using this particular vendor. I know, I remember that it was difference in the money, in terms of the amount of savings that we would have. So, that doesn't answer your question about the women and minority, but it certainly answers the question as to why we went with this vendor, I think.
Right, but the reason stated in the letter says, "This requirement precludes MWEBE subcontracting opportunities," and so, I just want to clarify, but I don't want to hold it up at all.
All right, City Manager, did you?
No.
No, all right. All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the contract award to Arrow Road Construction for modified hot mix asphalt. City Clerk, would you read the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, approval of the 2012 and the 2013 vehicle stickers selection and renewal timeframe. Staff recommended that the city council select one design to be highlighted on the 2012 City of Evanston vehicle sticker. Candidates for consideration are the Cradle, the Evanston Day Nursery, Mather Lifeways, the Evanston Community Foundation, and the Chessroom Club of the North Shore. For 2013, staff recommended design of a sticker for city staff to consult, coincide with the Evanston 150 celebration. Staff also recommends the city council change the sticker renewal deadline to mid-December to coincide with the new calendar year, fiscal year. This year, the recommendation, recommended deadline would be December 16, 2011. The committee discussed this, there, I think there was, one group was 55 years old, one was 25, one was 100, and I forgot the 99, I believe, and we decided that we would like to recommend that we use all five. And so, city staff will come back, they actually had a preliminary design that had all five, but they're going to come back with something a little more defined, and we would like to recommend that we accept a design with all five organizations for 2012, and the regular 150 sticker, I mean, 150, Evanston 150 for 2013.
Second. That's absolutely brilliant, thank you. Alderman Burrus?
I was just going to ask that Alderman Tindham be involved in the design of the sticker.
Because he thought I was joking.
Second.
He would volunteer stuff.
Voluntold.
All right, seeing no further lights, City Clerk, would you call the roll, and this does as modified with Alderman Tindham having to do this?
Say that as an addendum. Okay. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the contract is approved.
Madam Mayor, A34, the approval of a contract award to Arrow Road Construction for modified hot mix asphalt. City Clerk, would you read the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, approval of the 2012 and the 2013 vehicle stickers selection and renewal timeframe. Staff recommended that the city council select one design to be highlighted on the 2012 City of Evanston vehicle sticker. Candidates for consideration are the Cradle, the Evanston Day Nursery, Mather Lifeways, the Evanston Community Foundation, and the Chessroom Club of the North Shore. For 2013, staff recommended design of a sticker for city staff to consult, coincide with the Evanston 150 celebration. Staff also recommends the city council change the sticker renewal deadline to mid-December to coincide with the new calendar year, fiscal year. This year, the recommendation, recommended deadline would be December 16, 2011. The committee discussed this, there, I think there was, one group was 55 years old, one was 25, one was 100, and I forgot the 99, I believe, and we decided that we would like to recommend that we use all five. And so, city staff will come back, they actually had a preliminary design that had all five, but they're going to come back with something a little more defined, and we would like to recommend that we accept a design with all five organizations for 2012, and the regular 150 sticker, I mean, 150, Evanston 150 for 2013.
Second. That's absolutely brilliant, thank you. Alderman Burrus?
I was just going to ask that Alderman Tindham be involved in the design of the sticker.
Because he thought I was joking.
Second.
He would volunteer stuff.
Voluntold.
All right, seeing no further lights, City Clerk, would you call the roll, and this does as modified with Alderman Tindham having to do this?
Say that as an addendum. Okay. Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Madam Mayor, A6.
Oh, sorry, Doris, oh, nine to zero, the ordinance passed.
A6, Resolution 40-R-11, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract for the purchase of real property located at 623 through 627 and 1/2 Howard Street, Evanston, Illinois. Staff recommends the approval of Resolution 40-R-11, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the purchase of real property located at 623 through 627 and 1/2 Howard Street in Evanston, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $475,000. Funding provided for this acquisition is through a loan to the Howard Ridge Tax Increment Financing District, TIF, and from the Economic Development Fund.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wilson?
I had some comments, and first of all, I do want to stress that I don't think that this is a bad idea or an improper purpose, but I just don't think that it's an appropriate, appropriate decision, given our current economic circumstances. There's not a specific redevelopment plan in place, and I don't think that the city should be assuming the risk of the success of this particular parcel of property in this, in this economic environment, not to mention the cost of carrying the property, maintaining it, and taking off the tax rolls for the time period that it takes to, to accomplish some sort of redevelopment. So, I just don't feel it's appropriate, and I'm not comfortable supporting this acquisition. I understand that it's going to be funds that will be repaid by the TIF over a 10-year period, but it is a significant amount of money, a significant amount of money that's cash out the door today, so I can't support this.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I certainly understand Alderman Wilson's concerns. However, we are just moving right along on Howard Street, and as a matter of fact, tonight, I opened a letter from a 30, a theater that has been in business 30 years, 30 years. They attract to a certain coveted neighborhood, not in Evanston, 6,000 theater-goers a year, and they are telling me in this letter that they too would like to be in our new district, and that they are prepared to submit a proposal at any time. I just have to give them a word, the word, and one of their major staff members is an Evanston resident, so they've been following the Howard Street effort closely. Not to mention the fact that the other evening, I took two prospects to the property in question, and they're interested in a middle-scale restaurant, and that's exactly what our vision is. Some people think there's no plan, but there definitely is a plan. You know, you can't implement a plan for a given property until you actually get your hands on it, and we do not own this property yet. All we're doing is, we've, we've agreed to a price, and we're just asking for permission for the city manager to pursue the contract. So, I appreciate the, the support of everybody. I got an email today from a resident on Brummel, who's lived there for years and years and years, who said she read about this in the Evanston Now, and was just so excited and amazed that maybe someday, everybody will be able to hang out on Howard Street, and go places and buy things, and these three properties are just key focal points for the street in the 600 and the 700 block, with the other properties there owner occupied doing well. So, we expect to add to that, and I think nobody's going to be disappointed once, in the next six months, I think you're going to see a lot of wonderful things happening, and a lot of really good decisions will have been made by this council regarding that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I hope you'll support this.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Alderman Rainey should be commended for the amount of hard work she's put into this and her vision for Howard Street. I do share Alderman Wilson's concerns about borrowing from the Economic Development Fund, not enough money in the TIF to do this. Alderman Rainey, I'm just wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about what the timeframe might be in terms of how long you anticipate this property would be off the tax rolls, how long we will be controlling the property if our plan is to sell it, and when in the timeframe that might occur?
Well, I'm, I'm very nervous about doing that, because this building is fully occupied with rent-paying tenants, and in addition to the rent-paying tenants, with one exception, there are rent-paying eight garages in the rear that are generating income, and this property is not off the tax rolls, and it will not be off the tax rolls. It is our intention to get a for-profit, income-produce, profit-producing occupant in this property, so I don't see that this property is going to be off the tax rolls.
Alderman Fisk?
So, do you see us as being the landlord forever?
Absolutely not. As soon as the tenant leases expire, we will proceed with replacement tenants or tenant. So, but, you know, it's very difficult for me, having been in property management business, and especially commercial management, for years, I, I'm very nervous about talking about throwing out tenants that are in the property right now, when we don't even own the property. So, I, I really don't know how to comment on some of this, but I don't see us as being It's fabulous demographics, extremely diverse economically, racially, et cetera, and people need a place convenient to spend their money, and it's not Howard Street right now with a few exceptions. So I would ask you to try and be a little more broad-minded and give this a chance. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Thank you. I just wanted to address economic development in general and how we're looking at when we buy properties and having a strategy about doing that. And something we talked about in AP&amp;W that Alderman Grover suggested and I would like to bring to economic development is really having a frank discussion about how economic development can work and the notion of a public-private partnership and how success stories from government entities doing this. Evanston's done it very well. We've seen other municipalities and larger cities that haven't done it well, but this is a tool to buy properties, take control over them. And I understand your concerns, Alderman Wilson. I, you know, I'm probably the most fiscally conservative person up here and hate spending money, but if you do not take control over properties, you cannot expect the property owners that have let it sit there and deteriorate and not have good tenants. I don't envision that they're going to change what they've done for years, and we do need to take control, and we do need to have a plan. So I understand everyone's concern. I think that we need to be careful about this. We need to work very closely with our economic development staff and our code enforcement staff and be on top of this every single day to make sure that we're moving forward and that we keep going out and talking to businesses. Something that, not the last economic development, but two meetings ago, that I asked everyone on economic development, every meeting, to come back and say, "What business did you talk to this month? You're on the economic development committee. What positive thing did you do to bring business to this community?" And I throw that out to the rest of the council as well, even if you aren't on economic development. Who are you talking to? Are you talking to your friends about a business that can relocate here? I know three Aldermen, well, two Aldermen and myself are going to a business on Wednesday to talk to them, go check it out and see if it's something we want to bring back here to Evanston. I think we all should be doing that. I bring that out to the citizens as well. If you have a business idea, bring it to us. Bring it to an Alderman, bring it to the economic development committee. We all need to do this. I think Steve Griffin is one of the people that says, "Economic development is a team sport. Being on the council is a team sport as well." So let's all try to get on board on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I want to assure Alderman Wilson that I will put myself against any other Alderman on this council as having worked with property standards and economic development on Howard Street. This isn't something that I dreamt up all by myself. I mean, I've been working on it for years, but I could never implement it, I could never make it happen. And if it hadn't been for property standards and economic development committee or staff, we wouldn't have gotten this far. Furthermore, I think several of you went on a tour of Howard Street when I was getting rid of the churches. I mean, you cannot have economic development on a street when you've got seven churches in one block, storefront churches. So I accomplished that. That was a step taken going towards this, going forward to create some activity on Howard Street. I have taken Wally Bobkowitz and members of the property standards team down Howard Street, you know, at least ten times, at least ten times, pointing out this, that, this, that, this, that. And I will tell you right now, for the most part, it still looks the same. And we've now gotten three buildings, or two buildings, excuse me, just hopeful, two buildings, and we're going to make a difference, and we're going to show people that Howard Street can be a friendly place that people want to go to and people spend their money on, et cetera. So the way you make it sound is that this is just sort of an accidental happening. It is not. I have been working on this for over twenty years, and, you know, if you don't want to vote for it tonight, that's fine, but hopefully someday, you'll see that it was a good idea.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I just want to assure you, I never called into question your dedication, and you have made a difference, and you continue to make a difference, and I'm certain that you will continue to do so for some time. My point is simply limited to the fact that I don't think that we have appropriately the funds available to do this, not just for Howard Street, but anywhere else in the city. It's come up in a lot of contexts. Years ago, it came up with regard to, maybe people suggested it for the Kendall Property, Chicago and Maine, properties all over the city where development hasn't occurred and something probably should have occurred. There are lots of opportunities out there, and unfortunately, I don't think that we have the cash to avail ourselves of that opportunity. It's a great tool. It's a wonderful tool if you have the money to do it, but people are very distressed and distraught over the possibility of closing different public facilities, about staff being laid off. These are very real concerns as we're coming up to the budget season, and I don't think that this is an appropriate course, given the finances. And it's limited to finances. Like I said, the first thing I said, I didn't say this, I said that this was not an improper or bad idea. It's just, I don't think we have the money for it.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, city clerk, would you call the roll to authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract for the purchase of real property located at six twenty-three to six twenty-seven and a half Howard Street?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Seven to two.
Seven to two. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, I would move suspension of the rules.
Second?
Then I would move ordinance fifty-eight dash O dash eleven, amending the city code section one dash two dash, I'm sorry, section one dash six dash two, to authorize the mayor to solemnize marriages and solemnize and certify civil unions. When you said that, I said, I didn't say solemnize.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Staff recommends approval of ordinance fifty-eight dash O dash eleven, which amends city code sections one dash six dash two regarding the mayor's power and duties. The mayor will request, well, we've already requested suspension of the rules.
Thank you for your help in my new career. It's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The rules are suspended. It's also been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to solemnize marriages and certify civil unions. City clerk, are you ready to call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The ordinance passes. Thank you all very much. Alderman Holmes, does that complete your report?
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Excellent. And planning and development?
Page humans.
We have human services. Alderman Tindham?
Madam Mayor, point of information, do we adjourn as council?
Yes, I believe we do. So could we have a motion?
I'd like to move ordinance.
Oh, we moved to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second. City clerk?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. We are adjourned. I'd like to, do we need to move to convene?
Reconvene as trustees, not right.
Yeah. Would you like to make a motion?
I would move that reconvene as trustees for the township.
Second. Been moved and seconded to reconvene as trustees for the township. City clerk?
Trustee Braithwaite?
Aye.
Trustee Nguyen?
Your, all right.
It's a decisive crowd.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes?
Aye.
Trustee Tindham?
Aye.
Trustee Grover?
Aye.
Trustee Rainey?
Aye.
Trustee Burris?
Aye.
Trustee Fisk?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. We are reconvened as the township. City clerk, I think you take, I'm not in charge of the meeting, we have to elect someone.
That's right. Comes a time that we need to have a motion, a nomination for moderator for the meeting for the township, a meeting to discuss the township budget. I can take it from the ultimate, I mean, from the trustees, or anyone from the floor, or anyone from the township, as long as you are a regular registered Evanstonian. Do I have a?
And Alderman Burris, I mean, trustee Burris.
Trustee Burris?
I nominate Mayor Tisdale. Sorry.
Trustee Tisdale.
No, he's not trustee.
Is there any other nominations from the floor? Seemingly there's no other nomination from the floor, can I entertain a closing of the nomination?
Close.
All those in favor, second by five, by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Right hand, please. Do you promise to fulfill the duty of the moderator of the township budget to the best of your ability?
I do.
You're now the moderator.
Thank you. All right. We have before us the proposed budget and appropriation ordinance for town purposes for the year ending March thirty-first, 2012. Trustee Tindham, I think you're, it's still your committee.
Yes. I'd like to move approval of ordinance one T dash O dash eleven, proposed budget and appropriation ordinance for town purposes for the year ending March thirty-first, 2012. Township Evanston Supervisor Treasurer recommends that the city council township trustees approve the town of the city of Evanston budget for the fiscal year commencing April first, 2011, and ending March thirty-first, 2012, with town fund total of two thousand, two hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars, and general assistance fund total of nine hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-three. Total appropriations are one million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred six. This ordinance was introduced at the June thirteenth, 2011 council meeting, and this is for action.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments? Alderman Tindham?
Is it possible to break out the assessor's budget from the gross amount that's being asked by the county supervisor?
Yes, I believe it is.
Trustees, Madam Supervisor, Clerk Green, Grant Farrar, Township Attorney. With respect to the budget that's before the trustees tonight, I believe what you're alluding to, trustee Tindham, is the ability to do revisions to the budget. You'll recall, last year, there was a revision to line items on the budget last year that was done, so I think that's maybe what you are looking to do is, with respect to the assessor's budget, do revisions or things of that nature that would affect the total amounts in the budget that would be approved.
Yes. Sort of somewhat in reverse, I think that I was comfortable with the assessor's budget, but not the remaining township budget.
Well, with respect to the ordinance that's currently before you, the liquidated figure is one million, two hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred and six. I think probably what would be appropriate is if the assessor's budget, is that, and I'll defer to the supervisor and the assessor, with respect to, where does that appear in the final line item on the ordinance?
The town fund.
I believe that's part of the town fund, but I want Supervisor Vance to confirm that.
The overall township budget is composed of two funds, the general assistance fund, which covers the GA program, and the town fund, under which the town fund you have coming, the assessor's office, the supervisor's office, those particular things. There is no separation out of, there are exactly two funds, GA, town fund. Assessor's budget is under the town fund. The GA fund, according to my knowledge and ability, is decided by the supervisor, who is the top administrator of general assistance. The town fund is which one the assessor and the supervisor's office comes under, not the general assistance.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, for now.
Thank you. Trustee Burris?
I think I'm, actually, Grant, don't leave yet. I think this is piggybacking on what trustee Tindham is asking. Going forward, or now, if we can, break out and approve separately the assessor's budget versus the rest of the town fund and the general assistance. I think that's what we're trying to do here, and can we do that legally? Thank you.
Well, the way the township code is structured, it conforms to the Illinois budget law, which requires that the township budget be approved before the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year. So if what the township trustees are contemplating, and I just want to understand this correctly, is if they would separately approve the assessor's component of the town fund and then leave to a separate time, a separate item of consideration, the rest of the town fund, then I think procedurally, that is very problematic under the Illinois budget and fiscal statute, which requires that the budget in total be approved. That does not mean that line item adjustments to the budget to the town fund cannot be made, because under the township code, the supervisor and the assessor propose the budget, the trustees approve the budget. But to bifurcate the budget that's before the trustees tonight, I think hazards a host of possible legal issues that I would not feel comfortable recommending that the township board do tonight. So it's really much more appropriately viewed as an all-or-nothing, subject to customary budget revisions, line item revisions, which are the purview of the township trustees.
Trustee Holmes?
Well, speaking of the line items, on the assessor's budget, I still have a real issue with the fifteen percent increase of a staff person. There's just no way I will support a budget that gives any staff member a fifteen percent increase during these economic times. I don't care who it is. So I, we can certainly adjust that. Is that not correct?
That is correct, and that is similar to what was affected last year.
Absolutely. Okay. I would, if there's, then I would like to recommend that we decrease that fifteen percent down to four percent. I think, not what we're giving the rest of the city staff, I think it's three, three point five or four percent. I can't remember the exact amount.
Second. Been moved and seconded to reduce that line item.
It's by eleven percent. By eleven percent, yeah.
Alderman Wilson?
No, I can't find the current salary in all of these pages. What's the current salary?
I'm looking for it right now, I'm sorry. I'm trying to do it two times.
What's the current salary?
Three forty-one.
Forty-five.
Three forty-one, all right, good.
Three forty.
Help if I could see the small print on my screen.
Current salary is forty-five thousand. Bonnie Wilson, township assessor.
I guess the salary is not an egregious salary, so I, Alderman Holmes, I understand your point, it's a very large percentage, but I guess I don't have as much of a problem given what the salary is, and from my impression of what the work being performed is and the value of the work being performed is.
And I heard that story many, many times, Alderman Wilson, and I still say that I don't do it by the person, I do it by the position, and I think that if we're doing position-
care who it is. So I, I, we can certainly adjust that. Is that not correct?
That is correct, and that is similar to what was affected last year.
Absolutely. Okay. I would, if there's, then I would like to recommend that we decrease that 15% down to 4%. I think, not what we're giving the rest of the city staff, I think it's three, 3.5 or 4%. I can't remember the exact amount.
Second. Been moved and seconded to reduce that line item.
It's, um.
By 11%.
By 11%, yeah.
Alderman Wilson.
Now I can't find the current salary in all of these pages. What's the current salary?
I'm looking for it right now. I'm sorry. I haven't, I'm trying to do it too.
What's the current salary?
341, all right, good.
340.
Help if I could see the small print on my screen.
Current salary is $45,000. Bonnie Wilson, Township Assessor.
I got, well, I like.
Alderman Wilson, you want to?
Thank you.
Fifty, five.
I guess, the salary is not an egregious salary, so I, Alderman Holmes, I understand your point. It's, it's a very large percentage, but I guess I don't have as much of a problem given what the salary is, and from my impression of what the work being performed is and the value of the work being performed is.
And I heard that story many, many times, Alderman Wilson, and I still say that I don't do it by the person, I do it by the position. And I think that if we're doing positions, then we, then we need to increase all of the staff. I think that the rest of them are doing fantastic jobs too, including city staff, although I know we're talking about the township tonight. But to me, that's just, that amount is a ridiculous amount to increase in, in these economic times. So it has nothing to do with the person. I think he's wonderful, and I'm glad that, you know, she found him, but, you know, hey, I'm sure there will be somebody else if he's not willing to accept a 4% increase. There should be someone else out there who can do the work as well.
I, I don't know that that would necessarily be the case for that kind of price point. That's what, that's why, why I have reservations. I don't know if somebody else.
But we have an assessor. This is a deputy assessor. We do have an assessor.
Well, an assessor who's in elected position that makes $8,000 a year, so I think.
Just like the Alderman who make.
Who make 10.
Who make 10. Okay, so, I mean, it's the same thing.
I mean, it's, it's clearly, it's not a full-time job for the assessor. It's not intended to be. It feels like we're a full-time job sometimes, but.
Well, absolutely. When you're putting in 30 to 40 hours a week, it's more than a full-time.
But we do it for the love of the job.
Absolutely. And I'm assuming that he's going to do this for the love of the job as well.
Well, he's not. He's, 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 he's a paid employee, though. It's, it's a lot different than an elected position that you're choosing to take.
And we did, a position that we did not have before, and it's certainly not at the salary.
Okay.
I, you know, I mean, I, I hear you. I just don't play favorites, and I just think that we ought to, you know, we ought to do what, the right thing, which is to make it fair across the board, raise for everyone. If you're going to do one, then you should do them all, at 15%.
Trustee Tendem.
It's my understanding that we did have this position at a salary in, in excess of $50,000 during the last administrators, last assessor's term.
That's correct. We did have, the, the previous deputy assessor did make around.
How, for how long was she there, though?
Yeah, but he has the experience and the, he's been in the assessor's office for 13 years. I mean, I, I don't know if I can.
And there, the what, how, what? Not less than a year, right? Or just about a year?
Right.
Okay.
But he's also has the experience.
But you see, we're talking about personalities again, and I'm not going to go there with you all. I'm not, I'm going by the position. I'm not going to go on the person. I'm just not. It's not where I am, and I explained that to you, but, assessor Wilson, and also to your deputy. I, it has nothing to do with the person. Please believe me, this is not personal. It's the principle for me. That's all it is. It's about doing the right thing. That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
I, I disagree wholeheartedly on, across the board increases. I think it should be about merit. That's how we get good employees. That's how we hire good people, is we hire people that are competent, that get good reviews, and we try to keep them. If you give everyone the same increase, no matter how good a job they do, you're going to lose the good employees because they don't feel rewarded. And you're not going to be able to hire people that, a level at $45,000. If we want to be honest and be reflective, let's look at the salaries here at City Hall. City Hall salaries are outrageous. I've said it over and over again for the last two years. I think city staff are, the salaries are inflated. They don't even compare to what the deputy assessor is getting. I think we're paying our, probably our program assistants are here 40,000, 45, $50,000 plus full benefits. The, one of the few people that I've, you know, gotten calls about is the deputy assessor, how wonderful he's doing, how much money he has saved people. So I am for giving that increase. I think that's where it should be. I actually think it should probably be a lot more money. If you, once again, if you go line item by line item of the personnel cost here at the city, I would venture to guess that we have a lot of people making double that, that don't do as much work. And we've laid a lot of people off. I understand that. But we need to look at keeping people, and keeping people that are showing that they care about their job, and that they're competent in their job. It's not a ju, just a job title. It's about competency. I do have a problem with the overall budget for the township. I would like, going forward, I know we probably can't, obviously can't do it tonight, but I would like for our council to look at, or, sorry, Grant, to look at next year, if we can, find a way to separate this out, because I do not have a problem with the assessor's budget. I have a lot of problem with the other pieces of the township budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
And trustee Rainey.
I think there are too many people employed in the assessor's office. And what I'm going to suggest is, since there seems to be some devotion to the assessor's office, and I, I'm not sure why, because I get my taxes reduced frequently when I appeal them, and I don't ever go to the assessor's office. There's the county office, et cetera. There are plenty of places to go. You can go to Levy Center. But what I'm going to suggest is we remove the item, the $1,500 payroll processing. That we have payroll processing for a department that has four people making a very small amount of money in general is ridiculous. So eliminating, do, I know you participate in the supervisor's payroll processing program. Eliminate that. Don't participate anymore, and take that $1,500 and, you know, give it to this employee. But that's ridiculous. I, some of these expenditures are just nonsense. Why do you need four employees? I think you should get rid of the assessor assistant. I don't, I don't see any need for that. Because, I, I know, I know, that they're so wonderful and everybody loves them, et cetera, et cetera. But as Alderman Wilson said a little earlier, we are in desperate times, and I don't know that we really need that extra person there. So my, I'm going to make, we have a motion on the floor?
Yes, we do.
Would you repeat what it is?
Alderman Holmes.
To reduce the, the deputy assessor's percentage of salary by 11%.
Okay, all right. Well, once we dispose of that motion, I'm going to make, I would like to be called on to make a motion to eliminate the line of payroll processing.
Thank you. Alderman Grover, or trustee Grover.
Thank you, Madam Trustee Mayor. I think I was going in the same direction that Alderman Rainey was, and looking at the, the town fund budget. Were there other items that perhaps our assessor or supervisor would suggest we could eliminate from this budget that might enable us to compensate the deputy assessor in a better way than $25,000 a year? And I was looking at, in addition to payroll processing, travel education. And the line item for travel and education, which was proposed for $2,000 in this, in this budget. For me, though, the larger questions are looking even further ahead, and I'd like us to think about the township in general, and the township as a form of government, and whether we should start thinking about even dissolving the township as trustees, and whether or not the services provided by our township government can be provided by other entities, such as administering an essential general assistance fund, or providing counseling and appeals help to property owners. So as we parse through the township's proposed budget tonight, I'd like us to think even bigger about, you know, a couple years from now. Do we want to have township government? Will it be necessary to provide these core services? Can some other entity provide those services? And perhaps we can even tonight resolve together to ask our township attorney to look into those questions for us and, and get back. So we can get bogged down in the line item details, but again, please think ahead to what becomes of our township, and whether it is really the most efficient way to provide general assistance, emergency assistance, and counseling to property owners.
Thank you. Seeing no further.
Can I say a few, can I just say a few words?
Yes.
I just, you know, I'm standing here listening to all of you, and I just want to say, when I was elected as township assessor, I wanted to change this office and make it better, and make it helping the taxpayers, and being their advocate, and that's what I've done, by hiring this deputy assessor and having our deputy assistant. And I just feel very strongly that I am doing my job to the best of my ability, and I just hope you understand what I'm trying to do, to make this a better, a better office for all the taxpayers in Evanston, to save the money that, that they weren't being, that, that, to save the taxpayers' money that they weren't getting, they weren't being saved before, I mean, over $300,000, and helping them with their escrows, their, their mortgage payments, and making sure that they can stay in Evanston. I think that's what we're trying to do, and that's what I'm trying to do.
I think everyone agrees that you have improved the office incredibly much. Alderman Burris.
I just want to follow up on Alderman Grover's comment about, can we refer to Grant? When do you think you could have something to us about how to go about the process of dissolving the township and what that looks like timeframe? Thank you.
Trustees, with respect to the issue that, that's posed, those considerations touch upon a host of different Illinois statutes. It's going to take me quite some time to compile all of the relevant statutes, analyze them, and put those into an opinion that I can share with the board and with Supervisor Vance and Assessor Wilson. We have been in the process of working that up. That process is not as far along as I'd like it to be, due to some other things that have been cooking, but I can assure the board and Supervisor Vance and Assessor Wilson, that we'll be looking at that to at least give a roadmap of options. It may not be permissible under the statutes. I just don't know, as I sit here tonight. It's going to be, it's going to require a very detailed analysis.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I, you know, if. I'm not sure that it isn't worth looking at line items, because when you add all the line items up, you get over a million dollars. And one of the things, I lost my, my budget. Here it is. Can you just tell us, and maybe you've done this in human services, why, why would something like equipment maintenance go from 1,100 to 3,000? What, has something happened that causes that? Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm just zeroing in on this budget, since that's what we're talking about. Except, you know what? We're really not dealing with the motion that's on the floor, Madam Mayor, and I'm sorry, and I'll hold that.
All right. All right. Let's, let's vote on the motion on the floor. If no one has any further comments about the motion on the floor, which is.
Could we get actual numbers?
Actual numbers of.
Well, it's to reduce.
By 11%.
Reduce by 11%. Come from 15% to 11% of the deputy assessor's salary.
So, I, I would just like the, the actual salary number. What, what's this person's salary going to be?
53,000.
But if it's, if we're, and what's the changed amount going to be?
That's 53 in here.
Once you've reduced it by 11%, though, is what I.
You have to reduce it by 11%.
Yeah, they're asking what the.
Oh, what does that mean?
What the salary.
She asked what the salary was.
47, 4680.
Maybe 46,000 something.
First reduced by, so it would be reduced by 5,830, 46 something.
It would be reduced by, all right. Assistant City Manager.
I'm sorry, I just did the, the math on the 11% of 53,000 is 5,830 by the, the calculator in my head. I'll, I'll reach for the other calculator that Alderman Wilson is typing out.
Reduced by 48, 49.
Right, so 5,830, so it would be reduced to 47,170.
All right. The salary would be 47,170. There was another budget that.
From 45, right?
That's on this.
It was 45.
It was 45.
Times 4% and then add 2.
All right. Is everyone ready to vote now, or do you have more questions on it? City clerk, would you call the, or Alderman?
We're looking at the wrong budget.
What budget, what budget, should we look at?
Yeah. Thank you.
There was a revised budget, and I think it's at the last of your information.
Off the top of your head, do you know what the proposed salary?
I believe that's page 371.
But it was 55.
Yes.
What?
And it wasn't.
It's even higher than.
Wait, isn't the current salary 45,000?
Yeah. And it goes up to, then, instead of 53, it goes up to 55?
Right, but then I took, I, then the, the bottom line budget was less.
Just, just the salary.
371, page 371.
Yes.
So there are other reductions in other areas to bring the bottom line down, right?
But the bottom line was never in question.
Madam Mayor.
For me, anyway.
My budget, my budget that I'm looking at on 341 shows the current salary to be 45,000, and the proposed 2011, 12 salary to be 53,000. Is that right?
Right.
No.
She's saying that's not right. Look at page 371. Now it's 45 to 55, Ian.
55,000 on page 371.
And take 11% from that.
Alderman Grover, did I?
I would say do a 4% increase over 45,000.
Right, and then the number is 47 something.
46,800.
Trustee Holmes, would you?
46,800, no.
Mind that addition to your motion, or revision of your motion.
So the salary would be 46,800.
46,800.
So we would be voting to change the salary to 46,800, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's the motion before us. Is everyone ready to vote?
I guess just a point of clarification. That's the only adjustment that you're making in the budget, and otherwise you're moving past the budget.
No, that's this vote.
That's the first adjustment.
We're just voting on that.
That's my only suggestion.
Well, that's the motion on the floor.
That's the motion on the floor. That's all the motion I made.
Motion, and also make a motion to pass the budget.
No, it would be no.
You gotta take the, the motions on the floor first, then you can move on to the next motion from that.
We have a motion on the floor. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn.
No.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
No.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
That's six against, so it's three to six.
Three to six, the motion fails. Alderman Rainey, you wanted to be called on.
Well, I, yes, I'd like to move deletion of the $1,500 for payroll processing for four people.
Is there a second?
Second.
Remove the 1,500.
Been moved and seconded to reduce, to eliminate the 15, was 1,500 for payroll processing. Do you have?
1510.
1510.
1510.
Do you have a page number, trustee?
Page 371. I'm looking at the new budget. This is what she's saying, is her new budget.
I don't know. I'm looking at 341.
No, look at 371.
It's probably an outside service.
1510.
Oh, 1510.
Yes, it is. All right, thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Just a little bit confused during this budget process, and I'm flipping back and forth between two budgets. So I don't know where we go from here, but I'd be willing to support, just after we work all this stuff out, I will accept the reduction in the assessor's salary, but I would like to move forward and just pass this budget. So if we can't move in that direction, but again, right now, I'm just a little.
We're getting there slowly, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get there. Alderman Wilson.
If I, if I could ask, Assessor Wilson, the payroll processing fee or charge, what is that literally and actually?
I, I, that's what our accountant does, or Val does.
Is it, is it an outside service used? Like paychecks are one of those services? Like paychecks are one of those services, so they actually process the paperwork?
It's for outside service, the, we, they process the payroll checks, send in the deductions, and does the end of the year, any things, it's for the payroll, actual payroll processing for outside.
Right. So, I'm kind of puzzled as to how the payroll would get done if the payroll service was cut.
Trustee Fisk?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be less inclined to cut the payroll processing because I think that's...
I have no idea what I'm doing.
I know. You have no idea what, how to handle that. I, I would like an answer on what contract service is, and also what the part-time contractual assistant does.
There is no part-time contractual assistant. If you're looking at the right, that's over.
Okay, that's all, all over. And what does the contract service do?
We have three. We have one with the, does the program administrate, it's the AIM program, and that's through the township, Cook County Township Assessors. It's a program that we, where we put in the permits and we put in the real estate transfer declarations, and we do comparables for the appeal period. And then there's the other program that is the, it's the AS400, that we have to keep that up to date, and that's through the Cook County Assessor's Office, and we also have, we put in new computers and we have a new IT person, so those are the, the numbers for that.
Okay, and, and your assessor's assistant, I mean, your deputy assessor can't pick up any of that.
No, he knows nothing about. No, we, we have to have those two, that's about a thousand dollars. Those two people fund the, for the town, Cook County Township.
It's, at this point, we have before us a motion...
Yes.
To eliminate the payroll...
1510.
Process for 15, 1,510 dollars. If anyone has comments on that, I'll take them at this time, otherwise, let's vote on that and then move on. Alderman Wynn, did you have comments on it? Alderman Wilson, did you?
Just, just what I suggested, I, this is a service that's outside, and that's how the payroll gets processed and checks get cut, so I, otherwise, I think they'd be reinventing the wheel if we were to cut that.
Alderman Burris, did you have a comment on the payroll?
I was wondering, is there any way the city can do it for less money? And it seems like it's a lot of money for four staff people. I'm, I'm not saying that we need to do it absolutely, but it seems like a lot of money to be for four people, so can we get a comment from the city?
Excuse me, where are you getting four people?
Only three. Um, three, I'm sorry, three people. No, no, four. The assessor, the deputy assessor, the assessor assistant, and part, oh, sorry, that's three. So, can we get a ruling from the city manager who is here on that?
Why can't a person in there do it? There's percentages for this.
Township trustees, good evening. The city of Evanston would be happy to provide a service. I think it's an order of magnitude issue. There's some fixed costs involved having the, the benefits calculated and whatnot, so I imagine that's why, the reason it's a little bit higher. If we were to roll these employees in as part of our payroll, you know, we're, we're paying 15, 1600 people this next pay period because of the summertime, so that is something we could do. And, and Madam Mayor, excuse me, Madam Moderator, members of the township board, as I hear your discussions on this, would offer you an option that you chose to exercise last year, which was a short-term extension to allow the fiscal year to begin for the township. If you'd like to send this back to the Human Services Committee for some additional work or, you know, ask the city staff to be helpful to you, to perhaps come up with a document of your, I think last year, Mr. Farrar, was a 30-day extension?
We did.
A continuing...
We did a continuing four months.
Four months.
At, at the same levels of the prior year.
At the same levels of prior year. My sense is this time around, you may choose to do a shorter period of time. You're also asking for some broader information regarding the future of the township, so perhaps you'd wish to wait and see how that worked out. But in the interest of, of time this evening, would offer that as an option for your consideration.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn, you're...
Well, I was, I was going to say something else, but first, I'll just say, given what the city manager has just said to us, I mean, if there are opportunities to, to consolidate some of these small items on this budget and achieve some economies of scale on, for instance, their supplies or their postage, I mean, does that exist? Just, you can just say, Wally, and I'll repeat your answer. Okay, the answer was yes. Well, then, I would be willing to wait 60 days and bring this back. But I have to say, we just bought a building for 470, well, we, we suggest, we authorized the city manager to negotiate to purchase a building for 475,000, and we have spent at least 35 minutes discussing 1,500. This is what people are driven crazy about. So, I think if we wanted to nitpick over this, then this should have happened in Human Services, and somebody should have said long ago, why don't we consolidate some of these really mundane issues? And, and rather than spend all of this time on this, I mean, we've spent more time discussing this than we did on the purchase of the building on Howard Street. So, I'm willing to support this budget, but if there are ways that we could reduce this more, but have it not done on the city council floor, then I'm willing to, I make a motion that we ask for a temporary extension.
There's a motion on the floor, Madam Mayor.
Then, that's my comment.
There's a motion on the floor. Why don't we vote on the motion on the floor? Because I don't think anyone wants to discuss it further. Oh, sorry, Alderman Rainey?
Or point of...
Trustee Rainey.
Madam Mayor, really, the motion on the floor has to do with some of the comments that the city manager just made, and so to take that one item out when, and as a matter of fact, Alderman Wynn, maybe you weren't listening, but for the last 10 years, we've been trying to get a handle on this budget. So, it's not nitpicking, and I don't think you have, I, I really take offense in comparing the items on the township budget that we are assessing and levying against the taxpayer for having anything to do with improving Howard Street. So, I, that's a little disconcerting. So, what, what we've had problems with over the years is being allowed to even tinker with the little expenditures of the township. And as I said earlier, when you start adding up all the 1,500 dollars and the 3,000 dollar line items, of which the budget is primarily made out of, except for the expenses for the township clients and the housing, that's the whole budget, pretty much. I, I believe that the supervisor's office is way overemployed, way too many people in that department. So, we have, we have a lease that runs till what? What's the lease at?
Twenty-third.
Twenty what?
Thirteen.
That is tens of thousands of dollars a year, 10, I mean, just the assessor's office alone for four employees, 16,000 plus a year, just for her portion of the rent. Her portion of this payroll program is 1,500 dollars. That is nonsense. There are businesses all over this community that have 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 employees, where there is a person sitting at a desk who, among all their other duties, also does the payroll. It isn't brain surgery. It, all you, there are percentages and why this, why this has been allowed to go on. There, there's a consultant for everything, there's a printer for everything. We need to get a handle on this. We've been told for years we can't. You can't touch it. The, the supervisor signed a five-year lease without any consultation from the trustees of this, the town of the city of Evanston, which I think was an absolute violation of her responsibilities. So, I think we probably should do what the city manager suggested, as we have been suggesting all along, but since it's coming from him, it has more authority, that we go through this budget and assign things that the city can, can do. We're doing it with the Park District. Why can't we do it with the township?
Thank you, Alder, uh, Trustee Rainey.
There, I'm, I'm looking right here, there's $30,000 in contract services for the township.
Trustee Grover, and let's discuss whether or not we want to follow through on the city manager's, yeah. Well, Trustee Rainey said she would go along with the city manager's.
I'll withdraw my motion, I'll withdraw my motion if that will mean that we can take a look at the, and I think we need to discuss what the city manager said.
Thank you. Alder, uh, Trustee Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, the Human Services Committee began discussing budget issues for the township back in February. I have emails going back to February this year requesting information. We've exchanged lots of emails with additional information. So, when it came up to Human Services Committee, I don't think it came out of committee with support, the budget. So, we have talked it over many times, or at least the past two Human Services meetings, and prior to that, seeking information about township operations and it, and the, the Human Services Committee declined to approve this budget, which is why it's before us, for a host of reasons that I think we haven't even gotten to tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Holmes?
No.
All right. Trustee Burris?
I actually wanted to respond to Alderman Wynn's comments. I think part of the reason why we're nitpicking this budget is because we do have a lot of problems with it, and we need to look at economy of scale. It's something I brought up with Ridgeville Park District, I guess, a few months ago, and they came in and we had a conversation, and we've found ways to help save money, taxpayer dollars, both ways. You know, in South Evanston, we're, we're double taxed. So, it's looking at that, and so that's why we're going line item. But, you know, to compare it to, we have had numerous discussions about Howard Street. It's not like it just showed up tonight and, and we just voted on it without a lot of discussion. So, it's, it's slightly disingenuous to say that and, and making it seem like this council hasn't thought a lot about that. So, I would, I would, you know, agree with the city manager, maybe we need to send this back, look at it some more, find out ways to, to, to reduce some of the cost here.
Trustee Braithwaite?
This budget is less than last year.
No.
The continuation is...
It's perfectly all right to be confused about where we are.
And then, just for a point of information, that we're arguing over 125.83 a month that they're spending on their payroll. And I could, am I not underst, what am I missing? 15 divided by 12.
No, we're arguing over 1,000.
Divided by 12 is 125.83, and I can divide it by four, if you'd like.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, and if anyone would like to make a motion to follow the city manager's advice?
I, I have a motion, actually. I'm, I'm, oh, okay.
All right, you go ahead.
Well, I was going to make a motion to approve the budget. However, my motion is qualified by my comment that I would like to give the supervisor and the assessor the directive that they are to start working with the city staff immediately to find economies of scale and ways to cut back on this budget, because next year, it's not going to be so easy, okay? This is a budget, it's the maximum amount. It doesn't mean you should spend all the money you get, okay? I'm tired, I'm not saying you guys do this, but I'm tired of people seeing things in, in a category and saying, we have this much money to spend, we have this much money to spend. Budgets are estimations or allocations on what you think you're going to have to spend. So, if you can talk to the city staff, to the city manager, and eliminate this payroll processing, I expect next year's actual amount to be zero, okay? Or whatever you have to reimburse the city if it's a couple hundred dollars, or whatever that happens to be. That's my expectation. So, with that qualification, I'm going to move that we approve the budget.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the budget. Trustee Burris?
I just, I, I disagree with, once again, we're kicking the can. We're not holding their feet to the fire. We said this last year, we said it the year before, and now we're saying, oh, let's give you some more time. Why don't we give them the three months that the city manager suggested and make them make these changes, not approve this budget? This is, this budget's outrageous. On the, the assessor's side, I'm fine with, it's the, the other piece that I'm not okay with. And by saying, we're not making them do anything. We're saying, yeah, you're fine, you know, why don't you try to play nicely with us and do economy of scale? And they can say no. We have no way to make them do anything by saying, we're going to approve this budget. At some point, we need to say no.
Trustee Holmes?
Alderman, excuse my sitting, Alderman Wilson said that, you said the 1,500. I hope you understand that we are talking about the town budget, not just the assessor's budget, because it has to be the whole thing, I believe. So, we're looking at a, a bigger cost in terms of payroll. I'm just using it as an example. So, I, I hope, I hope that's what we're talking about, is a complete budget, not just the assessor's budget.
Of course.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're talking...
I pulled that number as an example of one of the things that I did not expect to see next year.
Right, but then I'm saying that number is wrong. I'm, that, that's why, when you said 1,500, because the, if you look at the total budget, you'd have to look at the total budget to get both.
Oh, right. I just looked at the one, but again, it was just by way of, of a limited example.
Okay, just so, just so we understand each other.
I expect other things to be missing from it next year also, not just that. Travel, expenses, phones, whatever it is.
And that's fine, as long as we're looking at the total budget.
Trustee Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't support the motion to approve the budget. I still have lots of questions about whether the, our township offices are running as efficiently as possible. I have concerns about the fact that it costs 137,000 to maintain those separate offices pursuant to a lease that doesn't expire until the end of September 2013, the continual accrual of late fees and finance charges on credit cards, the general fund balance of over a million dollars, which is a year's worth of operating expenses, I'm not sure that's required, 22 workdays lost to training and professional development and conferences among our, our township employees, that seems like a lot, and in the end, it amounts to administrative costs of 36 percent, and almost three people in the general assistance program to run the office, and that's not people providing direct services to clients and processing applications for general assistance and emergency assistance. I think interns could be used for some of that work, and I don't know if our township offices have looked at using interns, unpaid interns for some of the work. It's the 8 percent increase in administrative overhead, which tells me that there are significant administrative costs in this office. So, for those reasons and others, I won't support the motion.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
And, and, excuse me, one more thing, and I think I would be much more comfortable approving a township budget if we had had an operational audit to look at, an operational audit that would tell us, is the township run as efficiently as possible? Are there things that we can tinker with? Are there better ways to do payroll processing? Are there better ways to administer general assistance? So, I'd like to find a place in this budget to, to commission an, an operational audit.
Trustee Wilson?
Thank you. I, I hesitate to invest the money in the operational audit, although I think it would probably be instructive. I'd like to withdraw the motion and replace it with a motion to give an additional 30 days. I want to keep it on a tight leash. I think we should all get, you know, come in with what we think should come out. There are a few things, I've talked to the assessor, not to the supervisor, but I'll withdraw my motion and replace that with a motion for a 30-day extension of the budget.
Second. Been moved and seconded to have a 30-day extension of the budget.
Different motion, all right.
We will await a different motion.
Trustees, Grant Farrar Township Attorney, with respect to the motion that, that's proposed, I would suggest that the appropriate motion be made to approve the budget on a 30-day basis that would take it through to July 30th, is it 30 or 30, I'm not, yeah, July 30th, yeah, so.
Hi.
Uh, so, what I, what I suggest is that that be the appropriate motion. The ordinance that would be passed tonight, we would have to suspend the rules to adopt and pass tonight in order to comply with the Budget Act. So, that would be the appropriate motion to amend ordinance 1T-011 with respect to that language. And I think what we did last year is we also, perhaps, I can have some assistance from our treasurer with respect to computing that number, so we reflect that in the body of the ordinance, so the record is clear relative to the, the final liquidated number in the budget, which I, I can't do as I stand up here.
Is 30 days realistic, or is 60 days? Because I'm feeling perhaps overly aggressive, but...
Well, I can, I can speak, I can speak with respect to the, some of the issues that were raised by Trustee Burris and Trustee Grover relative to investigating issues of the township, direction to the legal department. I don't feel confident in my ability to bring all those issues together in a comprehensive opinion within 30 days.
I, so I'd like my motion to be, approve the budget for the 60-day period, and my comment would be, I, I support the suggestion that we should look at ways to roll the township services into the city's purview, as suggested by my colleagues.
Right. Seventy-five, or 90, 'cause you, you, yeah, the, the...
No meeting, okay, so, 75 days.
Is there a second?
Well...
Thank you.
Well, why don't we just go to the end of September, so...
Let's just do the 90, like, if there was a reason we did 90 a year ago, that must have been the reason.
Okay, 90 days.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey.
Moderator Tissell, I, I'm thinking about supporting this under one condition, and that is, every single item that Trustee Grover listed be responded to. I, I've seen some responses that were totally inadequate and did not answer the questions, but every single item that she mentioned is absolutely key to going forward here. The fact that there is a million dollars in reserves, it's only because of one thing. The township has overbudgeted, and we have overlevied, and that's the only reason why all that money's there. The township ought to be made to spend down some of that money. I think, what is it, a two or three month? And I, I don't really think it's appropriate, I would never laugh at you, I would never laugh at you, Executive Director, and I don't expect you to laugh at me. And you should spend your energy responding to Trustee, anyway. The, the million dollars really needs to be looked at. That needs to be folded into and subsidizing these expenditures. I mean, that's all there is to it. But, what do we keep in the city budget assistant manager? What, what, how many months do we keep in reserves?
At the present time, Alderman Rainey, we have approximately two months, but our minimum is just one month, it's eight, eight percent for the general operating fund.
But it's good, but what is the recommended by the, you know, municipal finance directors?
Uh, they're, they're up a little bit closer to three months, is where they would suggest.
Three months, okay. That's what I would suggest we do for the township, and then start spending down the overlevied, hard-earned taxpayers' dollars. I mean, here we have the township overlevying our, our taxpayers, I mean, we're overlevying based on what they're presenting, and then we have the assessor coming to us saying that she's doing everything she can to reduce people's taxes. I mean, this is a vicious circle here. So, let's, let's get a handle on these expenditures. I think Alderman Grover is on the right track.
Thank you, Trustee Grover.
I think we agreed at the last town meeting in April that we would reconvene as a town on Monday, September 19th. It's on my calendar, so perhaps that's when we come back with township budget.
Excellent, all right. It has been moved and seconded to Alder, Trustee Wilson, would you like to repeat your motion?
To amend.
Move to approve the budget for a 90-day period.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget for a 90-day period. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite, I mean, Trustee Braithwaite.
Aye.
Trustee Wynn.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Holmes.
Aye.
Trustee Tindham.
Aye.
Trustee Grover.
Aye.
Trustee Rainey.
Aye.
Trustee Burris. Trustee Fisk.
Eight to one, the motion passes, the budget is approved for 90 days, all...
Nope.
Not yet.
No.
That was just the motion to amend, now you have to suspend the rules, and then we have to adopt.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend, suspend the rules.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules. Trustee Rainey, did you want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to know, why do we have to suspend the rules? I didn't quite get it.
Because our attorney said so, is the only reason I know.
But I'd like to know why our attorney said it.
The, the ordinance 1T-011 is the budget and appropriation ordinance. Under Illinois law, all townships must approve their budget before the end of the last day of the first quarter, which would be June 30th. The public hearing on the budget was conducted, this is up on, strike that. Let me back up a second. Actually, we don't have to suspend the rules, I was incorrect, we did have the public hearing. This is what happens when we do these amendments to the budget.
You're absolutely right.
So, I, I, I strike and remove my remarks.
Thank you, Trustee Rainey, all right. Could we, then, we're done. Congratulations. Is there a motion to adjourn from the township meeting? Oh, sorry, Trustee Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I have a request that I, I have a motion, and that is, I would like Trustee Grover's points all commented on by the township. I mean, for example, the need, I, I am not on Human Services, I do try to keep up, but I haven't done that good a job. Justification for a million dollars in annual reserve, reserves that are significant enough to conduct business for a year, and all the rest that you mentioned, and I'm sure she can provide it.
All right.
Did I get a second?
Second, I already did.
It's been moved and seconded to ask the township to respond to all of Alderman Grover's...
By our, by our next council meeting.
By our next council meeting, to all of Trustee Grover's concerns. I think we can do a voice vote on that, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, could we have a motion to adjourn from the...
Adjourn the township meeting.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the township meeting. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Trustee Braithwaite.
Aye.
Trustee Wynn.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Holmes.
Aye.
Trustee Tindham.
Aye.
Trustee Grover.
Aye.
Trustee Rainey.
Trustee Burris.
Trustee Fisk.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Ten oh five.
At ten oh five, and that concludes everything, except call of the wards. Alderman Braithwaite.
First, I just wanna do a quick congratulations to the 2011 ETHS students who received an award at our Unity Scholarship this past weekend, hosted at Mount Zion Baptist Church. And then, secondly, Wednesday, July 15th, at 6:30 PM, at Perla Cafe, I'll be hosting a meeting with the Penny Park neighbors, and I'm looking forward to seeing you out. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I wanted to let the council know about two meetings that we have just had in the last four days regarding the site at Main and Chicago. We had a community meeting at Lincoln School during the power outage, actually, part of Lincoln was out, last Thursday night with the community. We had about 75 members of the community come out to discuss the potential for an office building at the site of Main and Chicago. We had an excellent turnout, we had a presentation by the new owner of that site, actually, they've owned it for about six months, and there was a lot of good discussion about that. Then, this morning, we had a meeting with the owners of the property and the Main Street merchants, also very good turnout and a good discussion about that, and I wanna thank the community for coming and the city staff, and you will be hearing more about that. I see that there's lots of discussion out there in the various forums, and we'll be keeping people informed. I wanna also let people know that there's going to be another public meeting on a different site on Chicago Avenue. This is the site from Kedsy and Chicago South through what used to be the Subaru dealership lot. That was, that is a planned unit development for rental apartments, and that was a project that we approved about three years ago. It now has financing and is moving forward. There will be a community meeting to discuss that, refresh the community's memory on that. Some people know it as the Amley Site, that's the Amley Development, and that will be July 21st at the Firehouse Grill across the street. And then, we will be sending out postcards to everyone in the community to let people know about that meeting, that's gonna be hosted by the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Tindham.
No report, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Alderman Grover. Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Say that the township is archaic and ought to be abolished.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
Thank you. I wanted to say congratulations to Doria Mendoza, who the mayor appointed to the Human Relations Board, she's the Ninth Ward resident. And also, please come to the Ridgeville Farmer's Market on Wednesdays, we'd love to see you down there. Our next Ninth Ward meeting is on July 13th at 7:00 PM at Firehouse Two. You get to see the new fire engine and get a tour of the fire station. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
No reports.
Thank you. Is there a motion out? Alderman Wilson.
I have a motion. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C11, and C21.
Oh, is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris. Alderman Fisk. Nine zero, 10:10 PM.
All right, folks, into executive session. We really can't wait for everybody to...